Yeah, 360,000 gallons per day average.
Yeah, we're allowed to.
Before I turn it on, I need to go and know if someone else is on.
This is for the citizens' pay.
What have you all, Puffy, you in?
Sure.
Puffy, you in?
We're not going to charge people with this.
Okay, completing my order will be led by Councilman Zimmerman with a pledge and a prayer.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please prepare. Lord, we just count it a privilege that we get to stand before the citizens tonight to try to do work which would benefit them and their lives and the community as a whole. We just pray that through your wisdom and your guidance that we can make good prudent decisions that would help this community grow, help this community flourish as a community, and help the citizens be proud to be the citizens of the city of Goddard. Be with each of those in the military as well as in the police force that they keep them safe under your care. I ask these things in Jesus' name.
I see approval of the agenda. Please note the addition of an executive session for attorney-client privilege.
Okay, uh, just at the end.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can you add that or is it?
It's added.
Okay. Okay, motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Item D, citizen comments. Do we have anybody that wants to come up and speak?
Can I talk about City Hall or?
Yes, come on up.
I'm Linda Turnus, I live at 510 South Walnut.
You want to come here, okay.
Oh, to the podium, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, I'm Linda Turnus, I live at 510 South Walnut. I have lived here except for seven years right after we got married when I, since 1954 when I was born. And that City Hall, I swear, has been there my whole life and it looks like crap on the inside.
Community center.
Community center, yeah. We called it the City Hall my whole life.
Okay.
But yes, the community center. And I hear that there's some talk about redoing it or something. It, it just looks terrible. The bathrooms are hideous. I don't know. I don't, I haven't done a walkthrough lately, but we need someplace where people can have anniversaries and birthday parties for older people, but I have a bunch of people there and we have no place in this town. That's it.
Thank you. And we, we've actually been discussing that topic here lately. I don't know if you've seen it in the.
I saw it in the Goddard paper, that's how I knew.
Okay, very good. All right, well, thank you, Linda.
Uh huh.
Anybody else? Okay. Item E, appointment, uh, appointment's probably, we don't have to do that. So just item F, consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody take a look at the council papers?
Yeah, the only question I heard is on that salt spreader for the big truck. Do you guys not have little rear mirrors or do they dump it out in the back without it do a bed raise or what?
Yes, that has been repaired or else I wouldn't be bringing that item to council tonight.
About the only way that truck can raise is if you have that one hydraulic lever pushed in and partway out to where the hydraulic pump pumps it up and so something happened there.
I think a lot of that was an operator error, to be honest. I'm not very happy about that chain of events, but I wasn't here, so I can't speak directly to them. But I don't think it was the same, the same problem this time around.
I don't know if they need to have two people in the truck when they're spreading so that one can wash the bed or whatever.
We generally do and they did at that time. As I said, I wasn't here when that happened, so I can't speak directly to it, but my understanding of the chain of events, there was a little bit of mechanical and there may have been an operator error. That gentleman's no longer with us, so hopefully we won't have that in the future.
On the block grants where we were able to help our businesses locally, are there more pending requests or?
There was one pending. It may not make it, but the rest of them have been approved. So there's been five applications, one failed, three passed, and one's in review.
Awesome. Glad we were able to help those businesses. Thank you for doing it.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else? Question? Good for a motion.
Every morning, approve and consent agenda.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by favor, uh, Sarah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Item H1, rezone of Baptist church lot.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, October 8th, 2020, Mr. Jordan Ungles and Mr. James Verona submitted a rezoning application for the Baptist church located at 124 West Second Avenue. Mr. Verona and Mr. Ungles are requesting the rezoning of the Baptist church property for the purpose of using the annex property, which is that squat building right next to it, just to the east. They're hoping to turn that into offices. The lot is currently zoned R1, single-family detached. The requested rezoning would be for C1 Central Business District. Planning Commission did approve the rezoning on November 9th, 2020, and C1 zoning does allow for businesses, professional offices, financial institutions, et cetera, which would be under what they are requesting. Star represents where the lot's located. As you can see, yellow mean R1, this is our Central Business District. Basically, this section right here would turn red. This is an aerial image of it right here. These two lots next to it were purchased, oh, I'm sorry, we'll be finalizing the purchase at the end of the year if the rezoning goes through. These ones are currently zoned, Central Business District, this one is just the R1. So this is just the request to rezone this portion right here to Central Business District as well. There was a small fee associated with publication and legally speaking, it's approved as to form. Recommendations, it is recommended that City Council let the reading of the ordinance as is required and then approve the rezoning request for the Baptist church lot, parcel identification number 00254294, which would require a roll call. Mr. Jordan Ungles is here. If you have any questions, and Jordan, if you do want to stand up and address the Mayor and City Council, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask him.
Hello, I'm Jordan Ungles. As was stated, I'm one half of the partnership that is planning on purchasing the property. Spoke with the Planning Commission last week, so I wanted obviously to be here, you know, when it came up again, so I, does anybody have any questions or thoughts or?
How big of a facility or is it one that put up in there?
Well, so what we plan on doing is with what they call the annex now, we plan on basically going in and putting offices in there to try to bring more businesses to essentially to Main Street. I mean, that's our whole goal. I, I also own Kansas Strength and Performance and Ungles Independent Insurance Group. Essentially, what we did over here on industrial within the former interlocal day school is what we plan on doing in the annex, to bring more, essentially more businesses down to this area. I mean, that's the main goal.
Is there any possible plans of future business development over there currently?
On?
On Main.
On Main? There absolutely is. We, we don't have any of that nailed down yet, but that's absolutely part of the plan. I mean, that is the prime piece of property in this purchase and we absolutely do plan on that. The goal is, is to get the annex up and running and filled to create obviously cash flow to then develop the, call it the front lots there, whatever you'd like to call it.
What about the old church?
We, we don't have a game plan for the old church at this point. We're still collecting our inspections as far as just what is all going to be needed for the church. There are some significant repairs that would need to be done, so we don't have a game plan for that at the moment. Really, the goal right now is to get the annex up and running so that we can develop those front lots and get Main Street up and running as quickly as we can, is the goal.
Any more questions? Okay, so looking for a motion to waive the reading.
Like a motion to waive the reading?
Motion by Brett.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we get a roll call, Lou.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning requests for the Baptist church lot, parcel identification number 00254294.
Okay. Sorry, good. Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for taking a risk on Allen Goddard and doing all that you're doing. We appreciate that.
Well, we've been, I mean, ever since I moved my businesses into town, we've been welcomed with open arms and I think there's just a lot of opportunity.
How's the business been for you? Pretty good?
Oh, yeah. Obviously smack dab in the middle of pandemic. It's the greatest time for business, but that's such is life with, with everything else as well. But no, we're, we're excited to, we're excited for where Goddard's headed.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Item H2, consider purchase of the salt sands better.
Well, Mayor and Council, this is the item that Councilmember Zimmerman and I just touched on. A little background is a vital part of the city's winter storm response is the application of a mixture of salt and sand over the snow and ice on ice pack streets. The mixture is applied via a truck-mounted spreader and is used to increase traction and to speed up the melting process. Historically, we've used two dump trucks with spreaders mounted in the back of those. Those are large spreaders that hold four and a half, five yards of material. But unfortunately, in 2017, a hydraulic malfunction and quite possibly an operator error in the Ford dump truck caused the bed to raise while they were spreading and the spreader fell out and was damaged. As such, the spreader was scrapped because it was unrepairable. That left us with only the International Dump Truck as a means to apply salt sand. As you may remember, when we purchased the two 2020 Dodge Rams, we also got smaller spreaders. So those, those are spreaders hold about two, two and a half yards. And they gave us a lot of versatility getting in tight spots and getting around town, but unfortunately, in October, our International Dump Truck developed an engine problem. A sleeve in one of the cylinders is dead and killed, basically the engine's gone, $20,000 repair. So instead of searching for a new dump, and that took that spreader out of, out of use because we can't put it in a smaller truck. So instead of looking for a new dump truck right now, I was looking at to purchase another salt sand spreader for the Ford to augment our two smaller spreaders so we can keep a large truck out for winter storm response. Now, as I said, due to mechanical issues, we no longer can use the dump truck-mounted high-capacity spreader and that's really impacted our ability to respond to winter advance. So we're requesting to purchase a salt sand spreader for the Ford dump truck to replace the unit damage in 2017. What we are requesting to purchase is a Byers Salt Dog, which is a stainless steel ten-foot spreader with a four and a half yard capacity. The cost of the purchase includes installation of the spreader, the light bar, and we're going to retrofit the electronic controller from the International Dump Truck into the Ford because that saves us probably about eight or $900 and it was relatively new. There's a picture of the spreader that I'm proposing. It's pretty standard.
Does that truck have a blade on top or?
We still have a blade that we can put on the front of that, so we can still use it. We just didn't have a, a salt spreader for it. The cost of that spreader is $10,242. It will be allocated 100% to the Equipment Reserve Fund's street operations. And as you can see, the balance right now currently in that fund is $551,989.16. Legal is approved as to form. Did it have questions?
Are we eventually going to need two dump trucks or?
Right now, we're going to wait and just use the Ford. It's, it is a pretty reliable truck. It's not as big. We don't haul a ton of material a long distance, so I think it'll be fine in the future. Talked, I'll talk to Matt, talk to Brian, and we'll get our heads together and we may, we may come to council in the future for another dump truck, but right now we're, get the best use out of what we have.
To fix the Internet, to fix the International, 20,000?
20,000, and my concern is we could, we could spend 20 grand and put a new motor in that, but I think it's just the beginning of a worn-out truck. We had to put a new radiator in it, we had to put a new PTO shaft in it, and that was a little under $4,000 and that was about five, six months ago.
And it was purchased, used at 20 years of age from KDA.
Exactly. It's a used truck that we bought used, and we got good usage out of it, but it's just worn out. I don't recommend putting $20,000 into it, honestly.
We've used it on, in my 13 years with the city, we've used it for two big snowstorms and that last storm I want to say was in 2013 maybe.
What year's the International?
Oh, what is it, '92?
Oh, wow.
And it's, and honestly, the Ford truck has more power than that International truck.
Is that older than you?
A little bit.
Let the record reflect. The truck is older than that.
Okay. What year's the Ford?
What I, he had to ask me and off the top of my head, I cannot remember and I don't know. It's in '07?
Okay, so it's, it's newer than that?
Oh, it's, it's newer. I mean, none of our trucks are new, but we don't.
Is it big enough to handle large snowstorms?
It's, it's, yeah, it'll definitely go through storms. It's got more power than the International had.
Okay.
And to me, it's a more reliable truck.
Ford for some time.
Say again.
We can get by with the Ford for some time without needing a bigger truck.
And that was my key for bringing a spreader instead of looking for a bigger truck, because I think we can get by with it. Get a good spreader so we have our snow response under control and then run it.
And as, as we discussed, not feeling rushed into a purchase when it's time to replace the dump truck, but being able to make a, a good purchase.
There's a lot of options out there for trucks and I don't want to be rushed. I don't want to look into a used truck and not have time to really spend our time looking at one. You don't want to rush into a new truck because it's expensive. So this'll buy us a lot of time and I intend to use this Ford. I mean, it's not a bad truck. It's older, but it's not a bad truck.
Okay. Well, what do you guys want to do? Any questions?
Does the smaller trucks have a blade on them?
No. We've got four small trucks with blades. Our Dodges are, all of our one times, our two Dodgers, our Chevy and our Ford. The Dodges have also small spreaders, which is okay, but you can't put the large capacity in to run for a long time, so they have to run and fill up and run back. And it does help, but it's nice to have the big truck.
They're what?
They do a couple intersections and then they're done.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
And they, and they're good, but we need the big truck also for long runs.
I was thinking all the new neighborhoods that's coming in.
Well, the smaller trucks will be better.
The smaller trucks do a lot better than neighborhoods. They're shorter, with the blades on them, they get long and they get difficult in a neighborhood. And those, those Dodges, full of sand and with the blade, this last little bit of snow we had, they've got nice power and they were, they were taking care of business. So they were a really good purchase.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable taking the recommendation to get the spreader.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to take the recommendations.
Okay. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
So we're going to continue talking about the utility rates. This, basically what I want to do tonight is just give a quick overview of what we've spoken about before and then talk about an opportunity that may be available to us that will help reduce bills. First of all, just overview of what our rate structure is and what's changed from since back in 2015 when the ordinances were passed. If you see there at the bottom, combined base rate and debt service rate and the total monthly minimum are shown there. This is just a customer account history for water and sewer going back to 2005, showing that we have more than doubled the size of both our utilities in that time. This is the budget debt service for the water utility. You see there the. You see there, the, in 2020, we have the debt service, which includes a transfer to bond and interest to pay for the water storage tank, and then we have the loan payment for the 16-inch supply line. And that just shows the history of debt service, the budget, and our customer accounts for the water utility. And this is the, with the, and again, here, we actually have a breakdown of that debt service. The, this is the transfer to the bond and interest fund because we have an issuance for our newer members. One of our, one of our GO bonds contains improvements to an intersection, but also includes the purchase of the purple water storage tank that's out there. They're combined in the same, so we transferred a portion of that debt from, from water to pay for that improvement. And then the $167,000 here, that's the debt service payment on the water supply line, which is a revolving loan through KDHE. And this is going forward. You see those numbers stay the same, but those are, as opposed to our sewer debt, which you will see here in a second grows over the years. These issuance were set to have the same payment amount every year until they're retired. For sewer utility, see here, currently, our debt service for 2020 is $535,000. That $35,000 portion of it will go off this year because that was the portion, that was the final payment for the lagoons. And so it'll just be $530,000 this year. You can see here, budget, debt service, and customer account history as well. And the past, this is the, this is up until now what the debt service payment has been. You see, we have, this is just for the wastewater treatment facility. Interest payment, $105,000, about $106,000, and the bulk of it is the principal payment also with some fees. And, but the total debt service payment is half a million dollars, and that's gone up from two years ago because we had the first larger payment last year. We have the full payment this year. It's $500,000. And you'll see going forward, that in 2024 and 2025, those payment amounts go up again. And that's just how the debt was, the debt schedule was made at the time of the original issuance. We've also done a rate survey. We showed you last, last time we discussed, just showing how the city of Goddard compares to the others, some other cities in the Wichita area, and Wichita is also provided there for comparison. We talked about how on the debts, on the wastewater side, we do have a high debt service portion compared to some of the other comparable cities. But if you look, and we're, the average monthly cost for an average customer is quite a bit higher than the other city in the area, and again, that's all because of the debt service for the most part. And the combined water and sewer bill, we're not, we're not the lowest, we're not the highest, but we're probably on the higher end compared to some other places. But anyway, the new thing we want to talk about is, we'll reestablish here, the debt service, the wastewater treatment debt service payment is the single largest contributor to the high-water sewer bills. Currently, it's $2795 per month just for the debt service and the wastewater plant. And when those payments go up, it could mean as much as another $3.43 per month for each of our sewer customers to fund that increased debt service payment. And that does not include any other potential cause, or rate increase that we may need to cover O and M. I'm not projecting we will at this point, but that's always a possibility, especially as, you know, the warranties have expired on that equipment over at the plant. We have an aging infrastructure, particularly in Old Town. And there's, you know, we've done, we've been smart. We've put money aside for sewer replacement, but, you know, that, we're one big thing away from possibly getting to do another rate increase for O and M potentially. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it always could happen. Anyway, Brian reached out to KDHE about the possibility of refinancing our water and sewer debt, particularly the, or the, both the revolving loans, which is the water supply line and the debt for the wastewater treatment facility. We were under the impression that we were locked into the total interests established in those debt service schedules and the total amount of fees established in debt service schedules throughout, throughout the life of the loan. KDHE informed us, though, that we are only responsible, if we, if we retire those early and refinance, we're only responsible for the portion of the debt and interest up until the point that the loan is retired. So we are not locked into those costs until 2029 for the treatment facility and 2034 for the water supply line. So this gives us an opportunity to refinance those, and we're currently in discussion with, we're going to have more discussions with our bond counsel about the possibility of refinancing those, taking advantage of lower interest rates for one thing, and also extending the, you know, the life of the, of the debt so that we could have a lower annual payment and would be able to then lower the debt service for water and sewer to some degree and take advantage of a longer repayment period. That's all I have. If you have any questions, like I said, I wish I could give you better numbers. I've played around with the numbers to see what it could look like, but I'm, I don't want to promise anything we can't deliver when we actually get deeper into those calculations for refinancing. So we're not asking for you to do that tonight. We're just telling you that we're, the opportunity is available to us, and we're looking into it.
And we should have some, a solid ballpark late December, early January from KDHE.
On where we're at, okay.
On how much would remaining, and then how we could back that in and look at a new issuance because right now, we have roughly 2.4% for the sewer and 1.9% for the water for our interest rates, and they're lower than that now, so.
We'd wait till December to really make finals?
Yes, sir. It'd either be the second meeting in December or the first or second meeting in January, depending on KDHE's getting back with those numbers.
Okay. Guys have any other questions?
Looks like it is possible to at least help us to maintain a lot of the.
Yeah, the, the pro is, is it lowers the rates. The downside is, is that you'll be paying for something potentially longer than its useful life is, but it's, so there's a give and a take, but there's no right or wrong answer. There's just, you know, a pro and con with every decision we make.
Do you need to take any action on that?
No, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we'll wait till December to actually talk about what we want. Next item?
Item H4, governing body composition discussion.
Good evening. Father Mayor and Council. Probably about a month ago, you all asked me to take a look at what to do with the vacancy that we've got on the city council and to offer an alternative. And, and that vacancy came about when Mayor Larkin was promoted to mayor. It's a vacancy. It's a position that is open and available. It's a term that runs until January of 2024. So under the existing council structure, the mayor has the power to nominate a replacement to fill that vacancy, and that nominee would have to be confirmed by you all, the council. And that individual would complete the remaining term of that vacant position and run for reelection in fall of 2023 for a new term beginning in 2024. So here's the alternative. The alternative idea is to restructure the council. And I'll get to the particulars of what I'm proposing here in just a second, but I think it's important, before we take a look at those particulars, to understand how our city government is currently structured and everybody's roles within that structure. What you see here is a, an organizational chart for the city. And I believe it's fairly current, but obviously, at the top, you've got the citizens of Goddard. They're the ones who have elected all of you and trusted you to be stewards of the city, the taxpayers' money, and to make decisions for the good of the city. They elect the mayor and the city council. The mayor and the city council hire a professional staff to manage and run the city on a day-to-day basis. That's where we have your city administrator, who is effectively your CEO, who runs the day-to-day operations and has a city staff that he oversees. So the role of the city council, compare this to a corporation. In a corporation, you have a board of directors. The board of directors don't run the company on a day-to-day basis. They don't hire and follow rank-and-file employees. Your board of directors sets the vision and the policy and the direction for the organization. They make the big-picture decisions. They establish vision and policy for the city. They enact ordinances, resolutions, laws, policies, approves and adopts the annual budget, levies taxes, oversees the city administrator, and general city operations. The real power in our structure of government is with the council as a whole. None of you individually has the power. The power is in the group, in the collective. None of you calls me up and says, hey, Ryan, I want you to take this action on behalf of the city. Well, I'll certainly take your call. We'll talk about it, but then I'm going to tell you that, well, I can't take direction from single one of you. I have to take direction from the group because you can't act except as a group. The role of the mayor. The mayor in, in our system is largely a ceremonial role. The mayor doesn't have a whole lot of powers or responsibilities. The mayor largely responds to the council. Certainly, his mayorhead, chief spokesperson for the city, presides at council meetings. The mayor doesn't get a vote, except in the case of a tie, the council. And I've been representing the city for, I don't know, probably close to 10 years, and I think in those 10 years, there's been maybe a couple of tie votes, and that was largely due to the fact that somebody was absent. So the tie votes are pretty rare, which I think is a good thing. It means that everybody is generally swimming in the same direction. So the mayor has the, the power to appoint officers of the city, but that's with the consent of the council. It's like being president of the United States, and you get to appoint judges until you find out it really doesn't give you a whole lot of power if you don't have the consent of the Senate. Mayor has a limited authority to suspend employees for a limited period of time, pending advice and consent of the council. The mayor gets to nominate candidates to fill vacancies on the council, but again, to be confirmed by the council. So the common theme here is the power resides with the council, as it should. The role of the city administrator, that's the person you hire, who has the professional training and expertise to run the city. All of you have daytime jobs. You don't have experience running day-to-day operations of a city. You've got your own businesses, your own families to worry about, so you delegate that responsibility. You hired folks to, to do that for you, and that is the role of the city administrator. The city administrator manages and oversees the day-to-day operations of the city. He or she is responsible for clearing out the visions and policies established by you, the city council. City administrator prepares and submits the annual budget to you for approval, advises the governing body on the financial condition and needs of the city, supervises and manages city personnel, pursues economic development and other growth opportunities for the community, oversees constituent services, and performs any other duties that may be assigned by the council. So here, here's the idea I'm coming to you with. It's a modified council manager form of government. Through, through your head role authority, you have the ability to effectively create whatever system, whatever structure you want, whatever structure you feel will best fit this organization. This, to me, is the one that makes the most sense. And what it would entail is eliminating the vacant position. Establish a five-member council to include the mayor, and whereas the mayor currently doesn't get a vote, except at a tie, under this proposal, the mayor would get a vote. Another big change would be presently, your mayor is elected by the citizens. What I'm suggesting here is you all, as a group, as a council, would pick somebody from within your membership to serve as the mayor. It's very similar, in fact, it's the same thing that the Cedric County Commission does. So I can't remember if it's on an annual basis or maybe every other year. The county commission decides among its membership which one of them will serve as the president of the commission. That's not a position that is voted on by the residents of Cedric County. It's decided by the county commissioners. So the council would choose one of its own to serve as a mayor and to exercise the powers that are currently delegated to the mayor. That position could remain a two-year position as it is right now. Mayor Larkin is finishing the current term, which is through 2021, or I guess through January of 2022, to be precise. Or you could decide to do it on a year-to-year basis. I think for the, for, for the time being, in order to make these changes, it's going to take a little bit of time, probably would be first quarter of next year in order to accomplish all of this. And so my recommendation would be, if you want to go forward with this, I think you leave Mayor Larkin in that position through the end of next year with a new mayoral term starting in January of 2022. Your city administrator, I guess, would see a change in job title under this proposal. He'd be the city manager, but functionally, his day-to-day decision-making authorities, responsibilities, doesn't change one bit. Continues to run the day-to-day operations of the city, just as he does today, consistent with the policies and the vision established by you, the council. Now, financial considerations, there shouldn't be any material financial considerations. You're going to have to publish a couple of times when enacting a charter ordinance to accomplish this, but other than that, there shouldn't be any other financial considerations to speak of. Legal considerations, as I just mentioned, it's going to require adopting a charter ordinance to revise the most recent charter ordinance that was adopted here a few years ago with regard to the composition and makeup of the governing body. And that requires a two-thirds vote of the governing body, requires publication of the charter ordinance in two consecutive weeks, and then it's subject to a 60-day protest petition period. So again, we're talking probably three months down the road minimum before this would go into effect, if this is what you wish to do. Other considerations, well, what would happen? Well, what would happen in the event of a tie vote on the council? Because presently, if the council ties, the mayor casts the deciding vote. Well, as I mentioned, tie votes have been exceedingly rare over the years. And typically, on the two occasions that Brian and I can remember, they were the result of absences on the council. Okay? So, if there's a tie vote, the motion fails. But if that tie vote is the result of somebody being absent, then remove the issue at the next meeting. Then we have a full complement of the council. Then we have five votes. There won't be a tie. Would this proposal increase city administrator duties or authorities? Absolutely not. It's a title change, but duties and authority remains the same. And really, the primary focus of this is to empower the mayor with a vote on the governing body. And I think doing so provides for greater transparency, Because it would require the mayor, when he's out in the community, you know, promises he makes, he's got to sit up there and he's got to answer for them. He's got to vote on them. And that means something. Would the citizens lose their right to have a say in who serves as mayor? No. Now, while they may not directly vote on who is the mayor, they absolutely have a say because they would still elect all of you. You would be directly responsive and answerable to your citizens. And so, if you choose somebody amongst your membership to serve as mayor, and the city is not pleased with that, your residents aren't happy with that, they can hold you accountable at the next election. So, that's the concept. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You know, we can do whatever you want to do. I don't know if you like this or not. You know, I certainly wasn't anticipating that we would take any action tonight. I think the point of this was to initiate a discussion about what the city's governing structure could look like. A little bit different from what we currently have and how we would go about dealing with the presently vacant position.
Is there still a council president? Or is that still...
Chief asks, will there still be a council president? And I think you would probably want to designate a council president or vice mayor or somebody like that, just so that if we ever find ourselves in a predicament where there's all of it, a sudden vacancy in the position of mayor and there's not a whole lot of time to convene and try and figure out, well, who's going to take the spot? There's somebody who automatically elevates to the position.
It's almost identical to the county commission. You've got the chairman and the vice chairman.
Yeah. So, that was the inspiration for this.
And we've more directors. Yep, yep. What do you guys think was your opinions?
Well, I'm probably one of the ones that probably was pushing for this more than anybody because I've been sitting on the council for close to 20 years. And I've seen a lot of changes. And I don't know how many of you liked that park down there. But the mayor that came in after I did, after I worked my butt off for two years trying to make that happen, came in and just decided that they weren't going to do it. And had I not been working with a group that was right behind the mayor, doing work behind him that he didn't know about, you wouldn't have that park down there because he basically wanted to undo what I s- talked for two years to do. After that, we've had a couple of mayors come in here and were elected by the people. And they come in here with the idea that they've got these grandiose ideas of how the city should run and have never looked into the background of what made things happen and how they happened. And what the people wanted the city to do up to that point, they just had the idea, this is what I want to do and this is what changes I want to make, without any research as to how this came to be the way it is. And then they want to start making changes. Well, those changes may set the city back five years from the work they've already done because it took that long to get where they are. Now, they've got to go backwards and head a different direction. So, when you've got somebody being elected by the citizens that just decided on a whim that they thought it'd be cool to be mayor and maybe be boss hog of God or Kansas, it doesn't work that way. It can set the city back five to 10 years and take that long to recover from the damage they've done. Whereas if you've got people like the council that have been on the council for two to four or however many years, at least they have an idea of how the city got where it is in the progress of holding city meetings and seeing what the citizens wanted and trying to fulfill those needs of the people. And when you have somebody come in and knows nothing about that, all of a sudden, they're wanting to change something they know nothing about. Whereas people in the council are aware of this and are more likely to say, you know, we don't want to go that direction. We know what the people want. We're going to keep heading in the direction that people want. And having someone come in strange has, in the past three different times we've had mayors, have almost lost us a lot of city employees because they come in and start raising all kinds of cane and all kinds of heck because the employees know what the citizens want. The employees know how we got here. And they don't want to change direction. But then all of a sudden, the new mayor wants to change directions and is bucking them. And because they don't want to give in because they know what the city wants, all of a sudden, the mayor wants to get rid of employees. Well, when that happens, you don't get rid of one employee. You get rid of multiple employees because after a couple of heads quit, all of a sudden, the Indians start quitting too because they don't like what's going on. And so, now you've got half the staff gone and you're trying to replace them with somebody that doesn't know how our city's been running. And quite frankly, I've been there. And I took office in 2000. I was there. We lost over half our staff. It ain't no fun to be there. And so, I'm trying to head this off. I'm not getting any younger and I don't want to see the city running problems. And I don't want to see the city go backwards from what I've worked 20 years to try to help the city become. And so, I just hope that the citizens and the council will support this issue and know that it's for the good of the city.
I think one of the things that I was trying to accomplish with this proposal is to align everybody's interests. It's easy to make promises. I mean, governing is about making difficult choices. I would venture to guess there's not a single person in here that doesn't want a new community center, that doesn't want lower water rates, that doesn't want a new, bigger, better city hall, that doesn't want a big, you know, awesome park in North Garter. But money doesn't grow on trees. There are limited resources and it means you have to make choices. You have to establish priorities. And it's really easy to walk around town and promise everybody everything if you don't have to stand behind that and vote on it and make the difficult decisions.
We're trying to eliminate a yes-man mayor. At the end of the day, that's what we're trying to get to. Because it's very, not to try to down anything or down all of us, but it is not, our elections aren't that big. We don't have a high turnout in voters. So, if you can get a large community in your church to vote for you, it's not that difficult to win these elections. And so, in that case, we've had previous mayors in the past come in and just be a yes-man and grant things that they have no real skin in the game. They can push the blame on to the rest of the council if it doesn't end up happening, which is a pretty cheap way of operating business. But that's happened. I want to focus on another point that's been really inflamed, though, in this conversation. And that's the city administrator's position. People think that once this topic has come up in the past, that this would somehow give more power to Brian or whoever's in that position. And it doesn't. It just gives them a different type, correct?
At the end of the day, you all decide what this looks like. You all decide what you want the balance of responsibility and power to be between the mayor, the council, the city administrator. And so, you get to define the city administrator's job description. What I've put up there, and I've talked to some of you about this, and I haven't heard from anybody a desire to expand or contract what the city administrator is doing. This is primarily about aligning interests, about improving transparency, about improving accountability. Any other questions?
I think this is the best way to get some of the discord that has been sown that I've observed while I've been here. Just because it is easy to promise.
Sure.
A lot, when you don't have to be the one to sign off on it or you get it past the bug. Generally, people will do what their incentives are and they'll behave the way that their incentives are lined up. And it's a perfect way to fix that short circuit.
I think so. And the beauty of this is, it's always an experiment. You could try this and if it doesn't work, if it eliminates other issues, you can always tweak it. Constantly looking for the better structure.
What's, so, is it just pretty simple? Just a vote and then we move into the process implementing it?
Well, what you would need to do is basically vote to give me direction to proceed down this path. And then what we would do is we would put together the necessary charter ordinance in order to kick off the process and initiate it. That's going to take a little bit of time because what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to carefully go through the city code, carefully go through Kansas statutes, and make sure that we identify those statutes and ordinances that we are overruling or opting out of. So...
Brent, any questions?
Not at all.
Well, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to direct Ryan to proceed? Or do you want to take some time to think about it? Sarah, do you have anything to say? No? Well, what do you guys want to do?
I think Larry should make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. Go ahead and have Ryan get started on the process.
I second that motion.
Motion by Larry, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to the city administrator.
Honorable mayor and council. We've had 13 Starbuck draws to date with a total of $25 million, $27,981.50 having been dispersed. 22.1 of that's gone to Garter Sports with the, just under $3 million, a $2.9 to Garter Destination Development. That included the initial land purchase, project plan, development, and design. We have $372,018.50 remaining to be expensed. So, essentially, just under a percent and a half of the total budget remaining. And we received a pay request for that final disbursement that we should be turning around here within the coming day or two. You can see in the slide, the image on the left is from September 30th. It shows construction of the aquatic center with the hotel water park. This pad here would be where the health club's at. This would be the childcare center with the hotel pad and the drive-in approach. This is the image as of today. And you can see that still has been delivered for construction of the health club and childcare facility. Barbara Creek. Images on the left is from October 19th with an image from today showing the development. And you can notice that there's a few more houses on the right image than what you can see on the left, including one that's almost nearing completion by the elementary complex. There are 245 lots, 28 of which have been sold. We anticipate, or I should say, there's an estimated $225 a month in specials for the development with just under $2.99 having been levied for temporary notes. Cloverleaf has experienced significant build and growth. It's probably, to date, our most successful development from housing starts. And in fact, we anticipate delivering Phase Two here within December or January. You can see the progress that's been made on the image on the right for the duplexes along Martin's Court and for construction of homes there along Cloverleaf Drive. Phase One has $2.2 million in temporary notes for special assessments that we estimate at a 4% rate would be $141 a month. Elk Ridge. Elk Ridge is progressing nicely and we estimate Phase Three specials once the temporary notes are converted to GO being just over $300 a month. The image on the left shows current construction with the image on the right showing further construction progress of the homes within Elk Ridge. Rustic Creek, we anticipate bringing modified petitions and temporary notes to begin construction of these improvements here later in December or early January. The image that you see here, you may have noticed that a silk fence went up within Garter Galleria. And this is the first step for the bronze that we mentioned at the last council meeting with that permit having been pulled. The R-Cut, we anticipate nothing new to report here. But we anticipate bid letting occurring in February or March of 2021. The R-Cut is a KDOT project. We think of Kellogg as our artery to the rest of the world. And we forget that Kellogg's actually a state highway, a US highway, US 54400. And so, it's actually a KDOT project. So, the R-Cut is channeled, or, you know, the local, we are a conduit institution. But ultimately, it's a state highway and it's a KDOT project. So, we're paying for the design of the project that will serve us locally. And it's $86,000. And we've got additional allocation. I had another design invoice come in this past week. So, we'll get that turned around. The Frontage Road on 180... so we'll get that turned around. The frontage road on 183rd, this is 183rd Street, there's Kellogg with the existing frontage road, and you can see that existing roadway coming in and tying in to 183rd. You may remember that we had the roads closed to the southbound travel for only less than a handful of days, so that was a best-case scenario. And thank you to Brooke, our public works director, Brooke Brandonberg, for coordinating the signage and getting the word out, and for Thatcher working social media for us to let folks know that that was going to happen. And there's the access to the bank, and then you can't see it here, but the current frontage road will no longer be passable, and we expect that occurring here within the next couple of weeks. Some upcoming items, a reminder that we want everyone to have a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. City Hall will be closed on the 26th and 27th, which is that Thursday and Friday in accordance with the Thanksgiving Day holiday. We plan to have a continued, for Mrs. Turnus, we'll have a continued community center discussion in greater detail at our December 7th council meeting, so if you're interested in coming to participate in that. We'll have a backflow inspection code amendment on, it's more of an administrative cleanup, changing a few of the words that currently say shall to more into the may, that, because right now it's saying that we'll go out and physically inspect the work that's being done, and, you know, entry onto private property and such. So we're going to just clean that up for now, to where it just simply says that we may. And we'll have a public hearing on the suitability for habitation for a home on Summerwood Court. We'll have the small cell agreement that was postponed this week presented at the next council meeting as well. And again, that's just a regurgitation of the state statute that was passed by the legislature that allows telecommunication and cable companies to essentially utilize local municipal rights away. And that's been addressed at the state level rather than individually in each locality. We'll have a quarterly work plan and discuss some goals at both the December 7th and December 21st council meeting. We do hope to have some state senior living for Phase Two, to build some additional senior townhomes. There'll be some preliminary work that needs to be done. I know Mike is working on replating some of the existing design that's there, and then at that point, we'll be coming to you with temporary notes and whatnot to continue those improvements. And then Rustic Creek tent notes issuance process, that'll be December, January, with Cloverleaf Phase Two process running concurrently as well. So that concludes my report. If there are no questions. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Governor, body comments. Larry, what do you got?
Well, I'd hold on, just like those that came out tonight for the meeting and expressed an interest in the city. Kevin, thanks for coming. We didn't need you, but we're glad you were here.
Sarah?
I don't have any.
Okay. Michael, what do you got?
I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving holiday, their families. Stay safe, hopefully no one gets sick.
Brian?
Oh, my turn? Really? All right. Last weekend was, you know, a big holiday, right? Open weekend season. Hope everybody made it out. Obviously, they made it back. Dr. made it back too. So we had a good time. That's it.
That's it. Okay. Other than, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. We've got an executive session we've got to move into next, so I guess I, I have a motion, right?
Yes, sir. It's right there.
So I look for a motion.
I motion to go into an executive. Motion to recess into executive session for a situation with an attorney of note on matters that would be deemed preblished, an attorney-client relationship, to include the city attorneys, the city bond attorney, and the city administrator. We will recompete the open meeting in the city council chambers at?
15 minutes.
15 minutes. I wore the bad glasses today.
Second.
Motion by Brent, second by Sarah. Aye. Aye. Okay, motion passed. Okay, motion passes. Mr. Speaker. And I've looked for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Brent, second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passing.
If you're into my kitchen or something.
Oh, yeah. Okay.